Are we ready on the right?
Yes, sir.
Are we ready on the left?
Yes.
I'd like to call a meeting to order. Welcome. Please rise for Pledge of Legions.
My Pledge of Legions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's usually right here.
I know, I was like, where'd it go?
Before we get started, I want to recognize the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board who are here. Would you please stand and give me that yahoo? What was that? Thanks, Jessica. Thanks, Danielle. At this point in time, our invocation is going to be given by Pastor Jamar Brown from the Holly Springs United Church of Christ. Special guy, and just a little added note, this is his initial invocation. I hope there'll be many more. And he is really involved in at-risk kids, anti-bullying, and a few other projects that we're working together on. So Pastor, would you please come forward to the podium? That's it. Speak into the mic. You're on television.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If we can bow our heads. Oy, holy righteous God, we come this evening thanking you for another day. Lord, now we ask that you would grace us with your Spirit and your wisdom as we deal with the tasks that impact our community and our town. Bless us now with your wisdom and your guidance. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you so very much.
Appreciate it. Item number four, adjustment approval of the February 3, 2015 meeting agenda.
Motion to adopt the consented agenda as printed.
Second.
Motion been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Item number five, public comment period. And tonight, we're going to do something a little bit different to help people who speak and to help me, so I don't do the time thing. Our town clerk has spent a lot of money, 99 cents, to find an app that she can use to help you with your time and help me with the time. So as you come forward to speak, you will kind of see your eye over in that direction. And when you get 30 seconds out, it'll start turning red. At two minutes, it will be bright red. So...
Three minutes.
Or three minutes, excuse me. Yeah. So anyway, just want to let you know that. And in the public comment, we'll open, and our first speaker is Diane Harris. Hi, Diane. Please, again, your name and address.
My name is Diana Harris. I'm at 316 Flint Point Lane. Many of you have had the opportunity to come to our home over the last few months, and I wanted to extend my sincere gratitude for taking an interest and hearing our concerns. I put together a few charts and/or pictures to hopefully help you all understand my concerns as an impacted Holly Springs resident of nearly 12 years. These are our homes, not houses or products, and they're our lives impacted by your decision. Our homes are likely our largest investment, therefore, all of us here have a vested interest in protecting it and contributing to our community for future growth. This is a picture of our home to the right and the Butcher home to the left. We are being asked to welcome 19 new members and neighbors to our backyard. You'll notice the Butcher home that sits considerably lower than our home due to the sheer nature and lay of the land. The next chart was taken 20 feet past our property line. The little white piece of paper in the middle of the screen is where our property line sits. You'll notice we don't have a large backyard. We have roughly 25 feet of grass. Our home sits considerably at the back of our lot. I'm going to skip the next chart due to time and go to the chart depicting the Butchers' backyard, our neighbors'. It's a little difficult to get the lay of the land and elevation from a picture, so I'm going to do my best to show you what Chris and Sean will be seeing and approximately where. The long line depicts where a retaining wall will be, 10-feet retaining wall, and then on top, a six-foot fence. That's 16-foot feet of permanent fixture that they'll be looking at from this point forward, with neighbors looking down on them from behind as well as the side. This next chart is a planned design provided to us by Lennar in October Town Meeting. Lennar continues to plan for the same number of homes and townhomes adjacent to Sunset Ridge North even after their commitment to reduce to a 3.4-home-per-acre adjustment land. You'll see our home, Harris' property, and the Butchers', with our backyard and then an adjacent back alley. This back alley is consistently seen throughout the Ramcat Village. Nowhere in Holly Springs are homeowners with backyards and adjacent alleyways. This is not an appropriate or acceptable transition, in my opinion. Having seven homes as well as 26 townhomes, three stories no less, surrounding us, does not provide an appropriate relationship surrounding our properties as well as your UDO advises. I personally do not believe what Lennar is recommending to build in the heart of Holly Springs is in our best interest as it stands today without considering conditions to be placed on this amendment, which include lots bordering Sunset Ridge North, three units per acre maximum, requiring one lot with a traditional single-family home with front-load garage, no units higher than three stories, and ensuring appropriate buffers bordering it. I believe these are reasonable conditions to add at this top point in the process. I urge you to consider, and thank you for your time and commitment to Holly Springs.
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you, Diana.
Next up is Peter, and I hope I say this right, Villa Denson. Am I close?
Villetson.
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 Sorry.
Hi, my name is Peter Villetson. I live at 213 Chris Mill Lane. I'd like to present you with the signatures of 418 fellow residents, friends, and residents of Holly Springs. Don't take this as a condemnation of development, but rather as a desire to see a better Ramcat that has been currently proposed.
Give it to the clerk. Yeah, give it to Johnny, please. Thank you.
I also want to take a moment and thank the town staff for always being helpful and responsive whenever any of us had any questions regarding the Ramcat development process. I also like to thank you all for meeting with us, hearing our concerns, and even coming out to our properties to see firsthand what impact Ramcat would have. I wish to add a few more comments with regards to what the developers have proposed for buffers. First, at no point in no way should trees on adjacent properties be used to figure in the total border width. These trees are on our properties for which we pay taxes. We, as property owners, are responsible for maintaining them. Unfortunately, some trees never even survive the construction process, and as many of you are aware for having been to our properties, tree layout is different for each lot depending on what the builders did at the time of construction. It is unacceptable and disingenuous for the developers to utilize the trees on our properties in their buffer calculations. Second, the additional B-75 buffer type that has been proposed has been vague. The developer has used ifs when bringing up where it would be planted, and questions remain on whether it would be uniformly applied, at what stage of construction it would be added, and how far along the borders it would go. Maturity, of course, will take years, and it places trust in its upkeep with someone else's HOA. I can only imagine that priority would be pretty low. Finally, the proposed fencing has all the same issues as the B-75 buffering: when, where, and responsibility. It had been also mentioned that a six-foot privacy fence would act as a sound barrier. I did some research on that, and it will not. Sound, like liquid, will find the path of least resistance. It will flow around, over, and through even the smallest gap. As such, it would take an eight-foot wall to reliably reduce any noise by just half a dozen decibels, and that is assuming equal elevation on either side. I urge the town council to require what has been desired since the beginning: light-kind construction along the border of its adjacent neighbor. This will eliminate the onerous alleyways along the boundary, reduce density, and thereby reduce traffic. I believe that is what would be best for adjacent neighbors, surrounding neighborhoods, and the residents of Holly Springs while still allowing Lennar to make a profitable development. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And, excuse me, and last but not least, someone I can't pronounce correctly, Sandra Joyce. If she can get here. Again, name and address, please.
Hello.
Hand out.
Sure.
Hand them here, and we'll pass them along.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, it's all right.
Oh, are we going to start now? Can I wait a minute? I might need like...
Yeah, we didn't count the passing out thing.
Okay.
So again, name and address, though, please.
Okay. Sandra Joyce at 5228 Sunset Walk Lane, and that's Sunset Ridge South. After many meetings with individual members of town council, learning about the PUD process, and amending a PUD, and thoughtful deliberations on options, Citizens for the Responsible Growth of Holly Springs have come to some conclusions. There comes a point when acceptance may be the only way forward. Much as I, we, disagree with an urban community in the center of Holly Springs, there is a positive in the amendment to the PUD in reducing the size of the commercial area and eliminating the apartments and condos that provide a place for local businesses giving a sense of place in the center of Holly Springs. That being said, there is still a density issue as well as the blending with existing neighborhoods. To address these issues in a constructive way, we are proposing conditions to attach to this amendment in hopes of a partial resolution of these issues. One, reduce the base density from the proposed 5.4 to four units per acre. Two, on the larger lots now proposed at 3.4 units per acre bordering Sunset Ridge North, change to three units per acre and require one unit per lot, traditional single-family homes with front-loaded garages. This eliminates the need for alleys and is a better transition to Sunset Ridge North. No townhomes, duplexes, et cetera, on lots bordering Sunset Ridge North. This was done previously in Windcrest for Windward Point. Three, no units higher than two-story in this development. Four, ensure that the buffer bordering Sunset Ridge North is sufficient and dense enough to provide the necessary screening. This may include using more plant material than indicated by a B-75 designation. Complete the buffering process to the satisfaction of Sunset Ridge North homeowners. By definition, a buffer zone is generally a zonal area that lies between two or more areas. The buffer zone between these two properties should not make reference to or include any areas that are on the private properties of homeowners in Sunset Ridge North. Five, include a continuous five-acre park for residents retaining as many existing trees as is feasible. Trees needing to be removed in the designated park area would be determined by an unbiased certified arborist. Six, provide traffic calming at connector roads between the development and existing communities, such as traffic circles or other devices. Based on communication with members of council, we have agreed to the following changes in combining the above conditions, number two, three, and four. If the developers make mandatory an undisturbed perimeter buffer, as is required of Sunset Ridge North properties, of 25 feet on all perimeter lots bordering Sunset Ridge North in the Ramcat community afterward to be included in the HOA covenants, and those lots are sized at .33 acre, and the homes are built light-kind, meaning single-family, two-story, traditional with a front-load garage, no alleys, and no housing units are built higher than two-story in Ramcat, then the developer could eliminate the fence and the B-75 buffer between the Ramcat and Sunset Ridge North communities. We all feel that attaching these conditions provides a positive addition to the amendment and thereby the new community, and will go a long way to satisfying the citizens of Holly Springs with their concerns over this high-density, urban-style community in the center of town. Again, we appreciate the openness and helpfulness of members of town council and the town staff in our learning process. It is my intent to contribute in a respectful manner to the community that I love and call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. At this point in time, we'll close the public hearing and go to item 6A, which is a public hearing. Annex session A1405, H. and B. Stevens on Family Property, Laura Hallman.
Okay. Anexation before you tonight is located just north of the existing 12 Oaks subdivision consisting of just over 134 acres. As you recall, last month, this was brought into the 12 Oaks Planted Unit Development Community and was rezoned, Planted Unit Development, so this annexation is just the next step in their overall development process. It is voluntary request, of course, and is contiguous to town limits as, of course, 12 Oaks is part of Holly Springs corporate limits.
Any questions of Laura at this point?
It's pretty straightforward.
Nope. All right. At this point in time, I'll open a public hearing and close a public hearing. No one signed up? Back to the board for further discussion. Seeing none? Seeing none?
Pretty straightforward.
Motion.
Motion to adopt the annexation ordinance A1405, annexing 134.546-plus-or-minus acres, owned by H. and B. Stevenson family, and more particularly described as Wake County PINS 0730.82-36440 into the corporate limits of the town of Holly Springs.
Second.
Motion been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Sure.
Item 7A, consented. Item, Mayor Protam.
Motion to adopt the consented agenda as printed.
Second.
Motion been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item 8A, new business, 00 PUD, 05A, 05 Ramcat Village PUD, majority, or major, excuse me, major amendment. And again, to remind everyone here, we're going to talk about the amendment tonight. That's our chore, if you will. Laura.
As you all know, the Ramcat PUD major amendment is continuing through its approval process. The joint public hearing was held with both the planning board and town council on December 16, 2014, and it did go to planning board last week. And I'll go over that exact recommendation here in a little bit. But first, at the joint public hearing, I talked about in detail the proposed changes. Tonight, I'm going to try to be brief and talk about staff's recommendation as well as the project overall background and how we got to this point of where we are tonight. In terms of where we all started, of course, this is it, the Ramcat Village PUD situated center of what has become Holly Springs as it's grown around it, at the intersection of Bass Lake Road and Holly Springs Road. And of course, this is part of Ramcat Village as well, and is already developed with the Holly Springs Crossing anchored by Lowe's Foods and the Yakken Bank on the other side. We have been working with a developer, a property owner and their team since the fall of 2013. During that time, we were first approached by them, talking, laying out the framework of, they intended to reinstate the Ramcat Planted Unit Development, so we talked about how they could do that. Of course, that's laid out in the UDO. It mentions specifically that the master plan, once it expires, planning board does have the authority and the ability to reinstate that. It has to be done in its current state when it was last approved, so they weren't permitted to make any changes at that time. The planning board did recommend, excuse me, did reinstate that in May of this year. And then, within 30 days, they were told to either do conditions of approval that then met our current development standards, or do a PUD amendment, which they did. In late June, within 30 days, they did submit a major amendment to the existing PUD. Now, interestingly enough, the major amendment and the new PUD amendment follow the completely same process. So whether or not they were to start over and do a completely new PUD or do a major amendment to this one, they would still go through the same 105-day review timeline with staff, as well as have the same required neighborhood meetings and same timeframe. Now, we'll say that because they originally submitted in June, they were set to go before town council, the first meeting in November. However, due to finalizing traffic studies as well as gathering community input and making changes based on that, it was recommended to them to take some additional time and really look at this, and that's why they've lengthened their process by a couple months was in order to do that. So that's really how we're here tonight. It's important to note that approval of the Planted Unit Master Plan Amendment does not grant approval for construction of the property tomorrow or in the week after that. If the master plan amendment for the PUD is approved, the developer will be required to submit detailed subdivision plans as each phase of the development occurs to ensure compliance with the approved PUD regulations and master plan. Of course, those plans are then processed through the full review cycle and presented to planning board and you all for review and approval. However, single-family subdivision plans are not required to go through public hearings. If it consisted of multifamily dwellings, those would be considered public hearings. However, if the PUD amendment is not approved tonight, remember, it's still an existing PUD. Ramcat PUD does still exist, so the developer or anyone could submit a subdivision plan under review under the scenario I just described, and it would go through under the normal subdivision plan. Any questions of that?
Questions of Laura at this point?
Okay. I want to go over our...
Seeing none.
So based on the future land use plan, as well as the fact that the Ramcat Village Master Plan Amendment is in conformance with town standards with regards to stormwater utility design as well as road infrastructure improvements, which Elizabeth will go in detail after I come up with my presentation, the staff is recommending of approval for the Planted Unit Development Amendment here tonight. And a lot of that is based on the conformance with the comprehensive plan. This is the future land use plan map, which is, of course, embedded into the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan, as we know today, was first approved and brought about in 2007. However, we've had a modern comprehensive plan since 1998. And during that plan, this was always called out to be a mixed-use area that was supported by, of course, the core area of downtown. That has always evolved into the future land use plan map today. Now, Ramcat Village was first brought about in 2000, in 2001, and a lot of that stems from, oh, well, the comprehensive plan was approved in 2007. That must have been, we must have just based this area on the Ramcat that was always approved and envisioned, and that's not the case. The Ramcat was in conformance with the comprehensive plan that was done beforehand. So as the future land use plan is, as it exists today, this is called out as mixed-use in the dark orange, and the tip color is residential. But that's all included in this community growth area. And these growth rings are really, described it to the planning board, was think of it like an earthquake. So this area is your epicenter of development. This is your downtown core area. This is your main street. So this is where someday soon, we're going to have a great and very vibrant downtown, you know, full of vertical mixed use and that high-density residential wrapping around it to really support those areas. And we're going to have other areas, not just downtown town hall, but other employment opportunities. You know, we're really going to see that area grow and develop. And this community growth ring around it supports that, and we continue to see the infill of that area as we move out of the core area. So community growth areas, it's intended to provide for a wide range of commercial business and higher-density residential. Residential may be that of a higher density, provided that the residential's associated with a mixed-use project or immediately adjacent to major commercial developments. Of course, in this area, this is where you would see the higher density. You know, this is where you would see, you know, condos or apartments if that was what this plan could include. But really, I want to talk about, as you go, you'd have your moderate-density residential. And then, past this, you'd start to have your lessening densities. So you have your existing Sunset Ridge, and then you, as you get closer to this area, this is when density starts to intensify. So the residential promotes a wide range of densities, may range from two to six, or excuse me, two to eight units per acre. This is reading directly out of the comp plan. And within community growth areas, may exceed 15 dwelling units an acre, but I talked about, that's really at the epicenter, at the intersection. So we're starting to see a decrease, but of course, starting to still see a moderate density here of two to, excuse me, eight to two, but really, this is where you see the lowest density around two of Sunset Ridge is around three to four dwelling units an acre. So that's how you start to see the lessening, and that's really how we framed our recommendation and how we, when they brought forth their new changes and how they've done that, that's really how we framed our recommendation, was based on the comprehensive plan, which has been in place. I just wanted to go over that with you all. If there's any further questions of me, I'd like to turn over Elizabeth, who's going to give a brief...
Planning board.
I was going to, I'll go over the planning board now. We can do that now. Planning board recommendation. You want to do that? Okay.
No, it's in there.
Great.
Hi, Elizabeth.
There's a lot of transportation aspects to this project, so we wanted to give you a little bit more additional information. We talked, I think, at the public hearing about the process in general for how we do traffic studies, but now that we're at this stage, we want to kind of walk through what some of the major traffic components of this project will be. This plan that we see here is kind of a zoomed-in of the road frontage for Holly Springs Road. So it's along the frontage here. This is where Bass Lake ties in, and the new drive will tie in here, and then this goes down, and it picks up here, because there wasn't quite enough room on the sheet. So as you are aware, the comprehensive transportation plan requires road widening along the frontage. The original PUD also called for Holly Springs Road to be a four-lane median divided road, so this is not different. They're responsible from the center of the road to the north side to construct half of the cross-section for the ultimate four-lane design. So what that will end up doing is constructing the median, the widening, the curb and gutter, the sidewalk for the full frontage of the project. That will allow us to have some portion of Holly Springs Road to start to show the full cross-section and have the benefit of all of that widening in place. As a part of that, they also have to do turn lanes into their site and then maintain the turn lane onto Bass Lake Road. In addition to the road widening, we also use traffic studies, traffic impact analysis as a tool to identify if there's improvements needed beyond the frontage of a project. With this project, they were required to do that. There was probably some level of a TIA done some time ago, but it was a requirement of the reinstatement that they do an updated TIA, and so that took into account current traffic patterns, current connections, how the dispersment of traffic would go from this site. And so with that, we know that there are some improvements that have been identified that are required. We've separated them into two categories, those that are required with the residential component and those that will be required when the commercial piece develops. The main part when the commercial piece develops is that we want an updated study when we know the magnitude of what those uses will be. But at this time, we know what kind of the magnitude of the residential is, and we're expecting that to come in first, so we've kind of gone ahead and outlined those. And so what we're expecting is they will be putting in the fourth leg to this intersection and doing the upgrades needed to the signal to make that intersection work. They will be doing their thoroughfare widening and appropriate turn lanes. They also will be doing down Main Street and Holly Springs Road at that traffic light, they will be doing some signal upgrades and some enhancements to that signal to make that function better. The specifics of that are tied to the signal timing and things, maybe some striping, but things to improve that intersection. but things to improve that intersection. In addition to these improvements, we also have identified that Holly Springs Road is a road that's carrying a lot of traffic today, and this project will add more traffic to it. So we have worked with the developer to work out where they're going to be contributing to a fee in lieu proportionate to their trips that are added to the road cost to widen Holly Springs Road. Excuse me.
Take a break.
That's why I brought it up here. So they will be doing a fee in lieu of this, a portion of this cost. That will allow us to be able to construct that road in the future with that money being set aside for that project. The final two points that I wanted to kind of touch on was the connectivity and the street design. This project will be tying into existing street stubs and providing interconnectivity within the project. They also are using an opportunity with the PUD to be able to come up with a unique street cross-section, which allows for on-street parking and goes ahead and sets up a street calming kind of mechanism that that road cross-section will allow by having on-street parking. So if you've got other questions, I'll answer questions now or later.
Almost hesitate to whatever.
You can ask whatever you need to.
Any questions of Elizabeth while she's up?
No. Just one quick question. Tapering going back up Holly Springs Road, back to where the new police station and everything, is there going to be any fee in lieu, or are we going to look at doing some addition, tying some construction in down to where the fire station is?
Their project will stop short of the fire station entrance. So there will be still a gap in that road.
A gap in there? Okay.
Anything else for Elizabeth? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Get better. No problem.
Thank you, dear.
Okay. So at this point, I want to go over the planning board meeting last week held. They did recommend to you all to approve with conditions by a six-to-two vote. Of course, Elizabeth and I did an exact same presentation as we did to you all, just outlining our recommendation, of course, the traffic improvements. Applicent did, of course, spoke to changes since the public hearing. There was a lot of discussion over density and a majority consensus was that there was enough of a transition between Ramcat and Sunset Ridge North to recommend approval by majority, and that similar densities exist in neighborhoods all over town. We talked about Twelve Oaks and Wood Creek and Oak Hall, and talked about stressing the importance of maintaining the greenway connections that have been shown preliminarily on the master plan as a result. You see that condition in your packet, saying that they have to remain as separate greenways and not kind of evolve into allowing sidewalks to count towards greenways. We talked about looking forward to seeing subdivision plans so that they can continue to work to create a sustainable, high-quality neighborhood in Holly Springs with the importance of creating developed pocket parks throughout the community. And there was, of course, a lot of discussion with this was not unanimous. There were two dissenting votes. Talked about how, you know, one member felt that the density was not in keeping with the surrounding area and did not create an adequate transition. And another plenty more member felt that didn't, wasn't comfortable voting at that time and wanted and wished that the plan had more clarity for him. So those were the two dissenting votes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of board at this point? If not, we'll turn it over to discussion because I think everybody wants to...
At this point, the applicant is here, if you'd like to, for them to go over any changes since the public hearing.
Let me ask the board. Is it good for the applicant to come forward and cover the changes?
Yes.
Okay. So at this point in time, will the applicant come forward, introduce himself, and address, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Steve Leach. I'm with Lennar, and our address is 909 Aviation Parkway in Morrisville, North Carolina. Take just a few minutes to recap some of the finer points of the Ramcat PUD amendment. Between the summaries that Elizabeth and Laura both have given this evening, I'll try to skim over those so as not to duplicate the efforts in interest of time and respect of the council's time. So beginning here with this particular slide, we have asked to convert, I'm going to jump ahead, a six-and-a-half-acre portion of what was formerly the mixed-use area, mixed-use one, into residential. We have also conceded mixed-use to commercial, which is a concession from multifamily. That ability no longer will exist on the commercial portions of the front part of Ramcat. We have also moved, since you have last seen this amendment in front of you, to shift the previously approved, or reinstated, I should say, low-density 10-acre strip that ran through the middle of the project to the property line to the north and to the northeast, and to add another 36% to the 10-acre size, making it now 15.75 acres of the lowest density and the largest lots that we are proposing for this development. Blend it all together, we have reduced the overall density to 4.85 units per acre, which is down 10% from when you first saw this. We could have put at that point in time up to 386 lots on this project. We are reducing that number by 10%, down to about 347. Elizabeth talked a little bit about the streets. I won't get into that. We also talked a little bit about the lot standards. They are not sufficiently changed. They are designed to accommodate the neotraditional type of product, which is what we have in mind for this development and which is in keeping with the land use plan ordinance. Let me talk a little bit about concessions and committed elements to the PUD, the buffers. This slide is intended to demonstrate, like, there we go, a couple of different variations, one of which would be just a smooth gradient transition between the two developments. This 20 feet represents the shared alleyway behind the proposed homes that we would build. There is a 20-foot open space area here, and then there is a 20-foot undisturbed buffer here. Within the 20-foot open space area, we are allowed development activities, but we would put back a six-foot privacy fence, and we would install evergreens in front of that for additional shielding. And as we've mentioned earlier, we would upgrade the under-story plantings in the undisturbed buffer area to a B-75 opacity landscape buffer to the town standards. In this particular slide, we are representing a retaining wall. And the retaining wall was not originally part of the Ramcat PUD. It has been added in order to make the concession of keeping the 20-foot undisturbed buffer between Ramcat and Sunset Ridge North an undisturbed buffer. So it's a recent addition. That wall would have landscaping in front of it. The B-75 would also exist in the 20-foot undisturbed buffer area that we've committed to here. Above the wall, we would have the six-foot privacy fence and landscaping in front of that to provide additional buffering. The project has requirements of dedication of 10 acres of open space. We have two acres in addition to that. So we are providing for 12 acres, along with connectivity to the town's recreation center, the Jones Park, over here to the west, and greenway trails that would accommodate connectivity from the north and from the east through the project to the retail and businesses along Holly Springs Road, as well as to the park and to the school. Sidewalks on both sides of the street are proposed for this development. I think that Elizabeth touched on the land use plan and the suitability of this particular project to both the land use plan that was first created in 1998, and then later in, more recently, and last revised, I think, in 2013. Take a moment just to note, if you would, the location of the project to the downtown area and the pedestrian walking routes and the amount of time that we have between us and various locations in the downtown area, all of which are walkable, and even as far away as the Bass Lake Park, which is just a short 30-minute trek. We think this is a huge addition. In closing, I'd like to summarize that under the amended PUD, the town and its residents may expect to see better access to and from its parks, schools, shopping, and medical offices on Holly Springs Road, as well as to the town hall, the cultural arts center, and the library, all of which are readily available to walkers, hikers, bicyclists, pedestrians of all kinds just a few minutes from home. Our request for approval of the Ramcat Village PUD amendment this evening will effectively be a request for a downzoning from what is currently allowed under the existing PUD. It will guarantee that the lowest densities and broadest buffers are carefully crafted between residential uses to the north and northeast of the property will in fact be committed elements under the revised PUD. That concludes the formal part of my presentation. I'd like to leave with the mayor and council bullet points for the simplified overview of the PUD amendment. And again, I want to stress that what we're seeking here is not to do more on this piece of property under the existing PUD, but to do less. This is a downzoning.
We can pass it along.
Thanks, Steve. I am available for it and would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions from the council? Looking? No? Questions? I guess not at this point. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Further discussion, let's go one by one if you wish. Linda, you got anything else to add, please?
No. I think this developer has gone way over in trying to make this thing fit into Holly Springs. So I think he's met many of the requests by the residents, and I think that I am looking forward to Ramcat Village being in Holly Springs.
Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I go back a long way, as long as, same with Councilman Dixon. I was the chairman of the original 1998 comprehensive plan where we envisioned what town of Holly Springs was going to look like in the future and made plans for the way it grew out from those circles that you saw and zoning that would be in the different areas. And that comprehensive plan has been improved in 2008, 2013 to update everything that's been planned. But the original plan still is good. This neighborhood would give access, walking access to a commercial entity that exists there as part of the Ramcat that's already been built. It also gives connectivity from the existing Sunset Ridge North residents through to that same shopping area. It has met a lot of the, their proposal has met a lot of the concerns that the neighbors had there. And I just want to, it's hard for me, all over this town, we have neighborhoods that are built against neighborhoods that are by different developers, and they all blend in after a while. It's neighbors, what we're talking about is neighbors that are going to be living next to you as other neighbors. In every part of this town, you see neighborhoods transition. This gives us single families of a different size, but there are single-family dwellings against that whole area there, transitioning out. And I think it's, neighborhoods and neighborhoods learn to live with each other, and you don't even notice them after a while. It's the concerns, I think they've met a lot of the concerns with giving as much buffer as they can give. B-75 buffer, you're not going to be, I won't go, it's, but anyway, but I'm, look forward to this.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Hank?
Yeah, first, you know, I'd like to thank Lennar for having an interest in Holly Springs once again. They previously built a subdivision at the gateway on Kilduff Farm Road. So it's good to see that there is an interest in Holly Springs. I do like the connectivity with other neighborhoods, the open space and the additional acreage for open space is all very positive. However, while looking at this particular subdivision plan or development plan, I put a lot of time into UDO and the PUD requirements and so forth, and they pretty much meet most of the 11 of PUD review criteria. I mean, this is conformance with the comprehensive plan, protection and preservation of important view corridors and scenic vistas, innovated residential and business environments, all very good. But the one thing that continued to, I continued to have a problem with was number nine, which is relationship to surrounding properties. And I don't, I don't see that. And I took a look at the last, I know that it's gone through a few minor tweaks over time. And this last rendition of this, I decided to, you know, take a look at it and make some tweaks, draw some lines on the file. And I was wondering if it's possible to bring that up?
Counselor?
Is that attachment to your email?
Yeah. Is that possible to bring that up at all? I think I provided it to...
Who did you probably provide it to?
I think I did send one to you, and I sent one to Gina as well, I believe. If not, I can email it to you right now.
I don't know how to do it from here.
Counselor?
Is it in the file? Is it in the PowerPoint?
See what he wants.
Is it in there?
I think this is the Lennar.
Yeah, that's the Lennar.
You can exit out of that.
I can't even get back to our PowerPoint from over here, but it's on the server. We can slide it in.
Oh, I don't know if I can. We'll see. Oh, I need the keyboard.
Well, during the lull, I took a look at the latest version that went to the planning board and was included in our packet. And I drew a couple of lines on there for different zones, development zones, which addresses both the border between Sunset Ridge North and Ramcat. Basically, it highlighted that probably should be a, again, a better relationship between those homes on like Chris Mill and Midden and Branchside and Flint Point and so forth, again, with similar lot sizes. I think that that is a good relationship with surrounding properties. I was sort of mirroring Sunset Ridge North. In Sunset Ridge North, you have commercial, and then it gets progressively less dense. So you have commercial, you have your condominiums, you have your townhouses, Charleston... So you have commercial, you have your condominiums, you have your townhouses, Charleston homes, I call them village homes, I don't know what they're called, but the, the single-family homes with the, with the alleys, and then into the estate-sized homes towards the rear. So basically, Sunset Ridge kind of set the, set the trend for that area. And to me, what would, would basically be a good relationship with surrounding properties would be to, there you go, my thoughts on Ramcot.
The attachment with the little yellow boxes. Maybe, maybe not.
So I felt there would be a better transition, very similar to what had already been established in that, that particular area. And I think the, the map, there you go.
With the little, yeah, there you go.
There we go. And I would, I'll explain it for everyone, but I would encourage the, the development team to give this some consideration if, and I would appreciate if we tabled this so that they could consider this, but I'll explain it once it's put up here. What did I say? My thoughts on Ramcot? Didn't come up for some reason.
What's it called?
What did I say? My thoughts on Ramcot? Didn't come up for some reason.
Question, wait, does, does the applicant have a copy of your map, just out of curiosity? I think he does, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I sent it to the development team. But this, that, that map with my, my edits on there basically create a situation similar to Sunset Ridge North. Well, for the sake of time, I'll start explaining it.
Okay, go ahead.
Bring it up on my iPad.
I see what, I got it. Untitled. See, if you come down here, it says untitled. I believe that's it.
That's it. Okay, good job, Sheri.
Great.
Is that showing up?
Nice, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, Gina.
All right.
You're a genius, Gina. Has a nice ring to it.
Okay, look at those, we'll start with the, the green, the green line there, as you can see. In the, well, actually, let me start from the top. That, that first box up top, just, it addresses some of the traffic calming issues that I had received some emails on. I think throughout the development, the on-street parking in itself slows traffic down, but I saw that there, there is a definite need at Brantside and, and Midden Way for a, for a three-way stop. If you look all the way to the right, it's to leave that, that area of open space, or just leave it as open space, that, that area that's east of the Flintpoint extension. If you move to the left there, it's, the, the red line that you see across, that would extend the residential one boundary south to that red line, and the red residential one area only shall include homestead or estate-sized lots, minimum of one-quarter acre, which would mirror those that you see on Midden Way, Chris Mill Lane, and so forth. And if you look, go over to the left, in that area between the red and the green lines, only village and homestead lots in that area between those lines. And then the box down at the, the bottom, in that newly-defined residential two area, townhomes and any other attached housing would be allowed there, but they could not be extended north of that, that green line. I feel that that, that these suggestions help mirror it to be very similar to Sunset Ridge North, and I think this type of transition better fits the, those conditions in, in number nine. And I would encourage the development team to embrace this and look at that and request that we table this particular matter so that we can, so they can work with what I've suggested.
Okay, thank you, Hank. Sheri?
First, I want to thank Lennar and the staff for all the work that they've done on this and taking the time to meet with me and educate me on some things, and then our, the residents of Sunset Ridge North who allowed us to traipse through their house and their backyards. But I have to agree with Hank that almost 100% as far as what he's showing here is that there needs to be a better perimeter transition, other than the multifamily, the townhomes, going from the higher density, density up front to lower as we go in. But Hank pretty much said everything I wanted to say as far as that goes.
Okay. Thanks, Sheri. Jimmy?
Again, let me echo what Sheri said in terms of, thank you, everybody, for letting us traipse through your houses and, and the emails, the phone calls, the, the meetings that we had, Hank and I had with some people here in Town Hall over the last several, several There's a lot of concessions that have been made, and there's been some adjustments that have been made to the plans, and the changes that have been made, particularly in terms of what the Sandy and, and her individuals and her group have looked at in terms of, the understated perimeter buffers, the comments that they've made in terms of lot sizes and single-family two-story, et cetera, et cetera. It seems to me that for most of the area that butts up the Sunset Ridge North, et cetera, with the exception of the one section around Flintpoint, it seems to be, you know, pretty much in keeping with single-family lots, et cetera. The one concern I do have is the, the alleyways budding back up to Sunset Ridge North, and I've had some, I have and still have some issues with the townhouses that are in that section. The rest of the development, I'm very happy with. I like what's there, I like the transition, I just have, I'm a little more specific in terms of spots that I have some, I have some problems with. So that's sort of where my thought processes are.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
And actually, the, I failed to put it down here, but I believe I put it in my email, that, that residential one area would be, would be front-loaded along the, the northern perimeter.
I just, I think, I think it is disingenuous to characterize Sunset Ridge North as what we are mirroring here, because Sunset Ridge North on Middle Creek has $300,000 homes that back up onto two-story townhouses with a 20-foot buffer and an eight-foot fence that goes along there. And I don't think that that's any, I think that's a worse transition than what we have showing here, at least of all of the things that they've gone to, to buffer the two neighborhoods. You've got a whole street along the back of Kingsport, which is Charleston Homes on an alleyway that has a, again, a berm going up with a couple of pine trees and an eight-foot fence that backs onto two-story townhouses in Sunset Ridge North that overlooks $300,000 homes. And I don't think that that is a better buffer than what we have here that they're proposing. I think that they're shielding these areas. If you want to shield a neighborhood from another neighborhood, I think they've gone up above and beyond that and done the best they can to have neighboring neighborhoods. But to say that Sunset Ridge North is the example that we should use, I don't think it is, because what they're saying that they don't like is what's there in their neighborhood right now.
I think it's more the, the way the density is, is laid out is what I'm saying. And more so where I'd like to see where Ramcot touches Sunset Ridge North is more single-family home, like almost yard to yard, instead of alleyway to yard, or instead of, you know, townhome to single-family yard.
You will still have the, that same transition that is in Sunset Ridge North. You will have, in the zone below the green, you will have townhomes and, and, and single-family homes, and, you know, that'll, they're definitely going to border each other in one respect or another. I'm particularly concerned about the, the area that, that borders Midden Way and Chris Mill and so forth. See, we're talking about B-75 buffer and all that, but if you have quarter-acre to half-acre lots, depending on how they're cut, along that back edge of Ramcot, there will really be no need to have anything more than an A-20 buffer, because you'll have backyard to backyard, you won't have backyard to, to, to a driveway or alley driveway. So that's, that's what I'm proposing there. There would really be, you wouldn't have to worry about retaining walls and all that stuff if you just had life-size lots that bordered each other in that, that northernmost area.
I, to dictate that you have to have life-size lots in a neighborhood because they buffer, butter against each other, that, that isn't something that we've had to worry about or have to have dictated anywhere. If you look at all of the subdivisions that are around here, whether it's your neighborhood or the one next to you, or the one that's next to Sunset Ridge North, the size of the lots is not determinate as far as what we should have as far as neighbors. I mean, to say that a developer has to have the same kind of lots that buffer against another neighborhood has never been something that we'd have to worry about.
Well, it did occur with Windcrest and, and Windward Point, that those that were along the border of Windward Point were like-size lots.
And, and you know why? Because you were the one that requested them, and you are also the one that requested that that road that they built through. But that's...
Let's act like adults.
Let's be respectful.
But it just...
No, 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 no comments, please.
Okay.
And my, what I'm saying, Tim, though, is, I mean, it would be nice if the lots could be the same size, of course, that'd be in a, in a perfect world, but I'm just saying, not so much as the size as, as the type of, of single-family yard to a single-family yard, even if it was a few more homes.
But that's what they're showing there, along that whole side is all single-family lots.
But then we have townhomes over here near the Flintpoint side, and then...
Well, the town, now, the townhomes over there in Flintpoint, they're only touching one lot, from what I understand.
There's, there's two lots.
They're not touching, they're not touching yours.
And then over here by...
This is not a public hearing. Let's let the council work this out, okay?
Here by Chris Mill, so where these other, where the other townhomes were, that's, those are the areas that, and I have told the developer this, where I wish that we just didn't have the townhomes in the back there, it would help with the transition, perimeter transition.
Okay.
Well, let me add this, okay? First of all, the residents that came forth on this, I think y'all have done an awesome job talking to us and bringing all this forward. Lennar, I think Lennar has done an awesome job in trying to settle and try to blend in as best as they could. Ramcot Village is not Sunset Ridge. It's Ramcot Village, and it has its own design, and it's done as much as it could, as much as it could, and we need to be reasonable here, to blend in as best as they could. But they are not Sunset Ridge North. And you and, and the people in Sunset Ridge do not own that land that Ramcot Village is going on. You do not own it. This developer has, is within the realm of what we're supposed to have in that area. They've done everything that they can to blend. So we have to sometimes find a way to compromise here and find a way to accept that this is not Sunset Ridge North, it's another kind of development, and we need to be able to accept. They've done, I think, plenty relative to making sure that that neighborhood is blocked off so that you don't have to look at it. That's basically what it's about.
Kind of, kind of along those, that point, you know, saying...
I think they need to be reasonable, they need to be reasonable here.
I'm sure, I'm sure they spent a lot of time doing various, you know, various changes, but when I looked at the first, the first plan, and I'm looking at this last plan, there's nothing that's significantly different to my, my eyes. So yes, granted, they might have had a lot of meetings with staff, with, with residents, they might have had, you know, their engineer and planners do a lot of work on here, but to my eyes, I'm not seeing anything markedly different. You know, we were asked to take, we were asked to take a look at the revision, you know, before the meeting tonight, and I was really hoping to see something different, and really, all I saw was kind of the same thing.
Well, they've reduced the density plenty. And they put up significant borders.
Yeah, I'm not saying it was the same thing, I'm saying it's kind of the same thing to my eyes.
Well, you, it's not Sunset Ridge North.
I never said it was.
We're not looking for Sunset Ridge North.
I never said it was. I said Sunset Ridge North set the tone for that area, they, where they went from commercial and gradually less, less dense as you moved to the back of the neighborhood. And so they, they set the tone here. This is, and I, I've, I've said this before, it's almost like a 12, size 12-foot trying to be forced into a size 10 shoe. And this is not, there's, there's, I don't see much harmony, I don't see a good relationship with the surrounding properties as, as it should in, in number nine. I think it's glaring, glaringly doesn't meet the condition of number nine. You know, I can suggest all of these things all day long, you know, like with that, that issue, you know, Windward Point and Windcrest. I made the suggestion, I got the, at least the, at least the support of two other people. I can, I can request things all day, but unless it's, there's a majority opinion, nothing's going to happen. I'm just looking for one more person on here to, to take a look at this, to table it and have Lennar take a look at this as well.
Okay. Does the board have any objections to me asking the applicant to come back forward for just a very brief moment?
No.
Okay. Steve? Your comments, please.
With all due respect, the plan that you are discussing here and have been discussing for the last 15 minutes came to us less than six hours ago. We have clearly not had any opportunity to review it, consider it, and look at any possible way to blend this concept into what we have worked on now for 165 days. I was prepared tonight, particularly after listening to the comments from the residents of Sunset Ridge North, to acquiesce on the low-density buffer against their community and reduce it down to the three units per acre, giving up another four tenths. That may be another two units that I would give up, so that you would have that three-unit-per-acre low-density, large lot, larger lot now, against Sunset Ridge North. I'm prepared to offer that. In addition, and I've spoke to this somewhat, and Hank, I'm going to borrow your, your, your plan here if I, if I may, because I don't know that I could get back to mine very conveniently. The reason that there are townhouses on the east side of this is many-fold, not the least of which includes the connectivity policy of the town. Flintpoint Lane has to come through there. I asked about not, not building that. That was pretty much a no answer from the beginning, and we said, okay. Now that I know I've got to build that, I've got to figure out how I can get to it. So when I built this road to the town's standards, it just simply left me with less than 200 feet of buildable area, 100 feet on either side of the road. The only conceivable product, let alone alley-loaded, which is in keeping with the town... The only conceivable product, let alone alley-loaded, which is in keeping with the traditional neighborhood development, of which Ramcat, as it's proposed, is a compliant use, would be a front-loaded townhouse. We had a three-story, front-loaded townhouse slated for this area, a six-unit building here, a six-unit building here, and a six-unit building here. I think where Linda was going with this is, is there's a six-unit building that sits right here that backs up to open space, doesn't actually back up to a resident, there's a 75-foot lot of open space here plus our 20-foot undisturbed buffer, which is really about 95 feet between the townhouse lot and the single-family lot in Sunset Ridge North. That leaves one building over here that sits parallel to Flintpoint Lane, which means one end unit of that townhouse abuts one lot in Sunset Ridge North. If the objection's a three-story townhouse, I'll look at bringing a two-story townhouse product into this. But those are the concessions that I am prepared to offer tonight. To go to this level changes the dynamics and the design of the plan completely, and it ends up becoming, or boiling down to, if you'll permit me to be so bold here, is a property rights issue. I have a contract with Mr. Jones for the purchase of this property that's based on approved homesites. If we take away approved homesites, that means he doesn't get paid for them. That's a tough message to take back to him, particularly when it's a compliant use with an existing PUD and your current land use ordinance. It's a tough one to turn away. But if that's the message you'd have me take back, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Quick question, Mr. Litch, can I ask you about those townhomes on Flintpoint there? We talked about the grading, can you explain how the grading will be? Because I explained when I was standing in the backyard, it looks so high.
Two things to, actually several things that we had to contend with as Tom's group designed the engineering for this. There is what we call a catch point here. In other words, there is a existing stub of pavement here that I have to attach to. That grade is dictated to me. I am going downhill pretty quickly towards a stream crossing here that I have to get to, and there is a certain design criteria that comes out of your UDO and Traffic Engineering Manual for the type of vertical curve in crossing that creek. I don't know exactly what that is. Tom, you may know offhand, you may not, I don't want to put you on spot, but the fact of the matter is, is that I'll come off the matching grade here and we'll begin to come downhill here. The high point for the project is back up here in the heart of the project. We fully expect to knock the top of that hill off, so to speak, to lower that point and to use it to bring up some of the low areas over, in other areas of the community. That would include this area over here. So we would lower from what is existing topography here, down some, a fair amount actually, and now with the addition of, well, I should say the substitution of a two-story versus a three-story townhouse product in here, it's lower still. Back in this area are stream buffers and wetlands, and this is open space. The whole idea behind open space, as far as I'm concerned, is don't touch it. It's open space, leave it natural. Anything I do in open space costs me money. I don't want to do anything in open space unless I just have to. So I would rather stay out of it. The fewer trees I have to take down back here, the better. So with the stream buffers and the wetlands area and the type of grade, and it falls rather quickly through here, those are my constraints. That Flintpoint Lane has to be built and that road had to be built to get back there. There simply isn't room to put a front-loaded, single-family home in this area.
Can I just ask a quick question in terms of product and things of that nature? You know, in this buff, in this area backing up to Sunset Ridge and the area backing up to Midden and to Chris Mill, these are all proposed to be single-family with alleys in the back, is that correct?
They are all single-family detached homes with a shared common driveway. Yes, sir.
So every one of them, and there's nothing in your product mix that would allow you the flexibility to have a front-loaded coming off the street without the alley in the back? Because that has been in many conversations.
Neatraditional product is almost exclusively rear-loaded product, which is the theme of the project, is neatraditional. So if I make a substitution for neatraditional product and put a front-loaded product in here, then I am stealing the character and the charm and the integrity of the community.
All right. But basically, Emma, and I've also heard you've talked about that you will go three units an acre in this particular area and-
Can I get back to my slide for just a second? I'm sorry. Because I want to be clear on this. If it's a concession, I want to be sure we're all on the same page. Yes. Well, you made that look a lot easier than I thought, thank you.
She's a genius, too.
I can see why she's on staff. This is the low-density buffer that is currently, as it's proposed, 3.4. So what I am conceding is the 0.4, so that this buffer area would become three, no more than three units to the acre.
And that northernmost strip there, the one that goes along Midden and Chris Mill and so forth?
Here?
Yes, there, really along that whole portion there. What is the, with your lower density, what is the average lot size along there?
That is not on one of these slides, but we have a paper exhibit, if you'll permit me to grab that, I can tell, I can answer the question.
I wanted you to answer it. I know it's 0.16 acres, because I saw it on your map back there. I just, I wanted you to answer that question.
It's 0.16 acres.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, and again, the point with number nine, relationship with surrounding properties, I just, while you were speaking, and excuse me for doing this, I decided to look up a piece of property at the corner of Chris Mill and Steep Ridge, and then that particular lot is 0.4 acres. Which, again, 0.16 as an average versus 0.4, I don't see a good relationship there.
I fully understand your point. I respectfully disagree with it, but I fully understand your point. A neatraditional neighborhood is intended to be and is typically designed, go look at them anywhere, in Sunset Ridge North, in 12 Oaks, in Southern Village, and just about anywhere, they are typically narrow plans and deep plans in the parkings in the rear. The homes are pulled up close to the street, they have small yard areas, they are generally close together, but they are not on large lots.
I understand, I've seen, I've seen those. I've been to the one in Chapel Hill. I'm focusing on the condition listed in number nine, its relationship with surrounding properties. I'm just saying that is an example of what I do not see as a good relationship with that particular surrounding property. And it looks, if you look at this map, I would say some of them are even larger than 0.4 acres. So that's my holdup. Number nine is my biggest holdup on here.
That design he's talking about is in my neighborhood. We have big homes for the front of the neighborhood, large lots that back up to a, and then back in the area where I am, we have back-loaded houses and we have townhomes, and they're all blending in and there's no problem.
All within the one, the one neighborhood.
And the same thing on Kingsport. Kingsport, the Charleston homes there are neatraditional type with the, built right up to the sidewalk.
Right.
With the garages behind it, with the alley back there.
I know.
And it's the same thing that we're talking about here.
My neighborhood, they all back up to very large homes.
In this particular, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm saying, I understand that, you know, I'm very familiar with this. I'm looking at number nine, relationship with surrounding properties.
Would you look at for me the exhibit-
If there is a relationship, I would say it's dysfunctional relationship.
Would you look for me then at the exhibit that I just passed out? There are, this is Sunset Ridge North, by the way. There are two yellow sticky highlight thingies on here. And in both of those locations, you will see where townhomes back directly up to single-family detached lots. On the second page, you'll actually even see the lot sizes as reference. Does that fit number nine, sir?
That's what I'm referring to, it's the same-
I'm looking at the relationship between Sunset Ridge North and Ramcat Village.
I understand. This is Sunset Ridge North.
Right, but that's within Sunset Ridge.
It is within, but it is residential to residential, which is the whole point I'm trying to make.
That's your point. My point and the point I need to look at and the decision I have to make is relationship with surrounding properties. And the surrounding properties I'm looking at are those in Sunset Ridge North, which are north of that orange section on here. I'm not comparing, I don't care about any other place in the world. I care about that orange strip right there.
Understood, and I think it's probably safe to say at this point that we simply disagree on this point and maybe it's best to leave it be.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions that I can answer, folks?
I think not, Steve. Thank you. All right, we have some differences of opinion, which is not unusual, nor is it bad.
Well, it is.
Secondly, I don't know how this is going to turn out, but I will say this, thanks to all of you who have inputted, some of which I agreed with, some of which I did not, some of which I compromised my own head, but this is the file I put together today just from the stuff that we've had in the last. So if nothing else, I want to impress upon everybody here, we spent a lot of time, a lot of work on this, and however it comes out, just know that we did that versus just brushing things aside, okay? Any other comments or questions, or did we leave anything out, or are we?
I think both sides have done an awesome job in laying this out for us.
Are we ready to make a decision, or do we want to talk further?
Well, something that's similar but not on, not specific to this, I think this whole, the whole, the whole review process for this, both from the citizen perspective, our perspective and so forth, and what it did expose is that there is a, there is definitely a need for public education on the, on the development process and what a council can and can't do and really all the steps that have to, that a developer must go through and what we must, we can and cannot consider, so.
May I call a question at this point?
I'm with me.
Sure. Hank? Jerry?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. All right. Want to come back up and? We will hit, we will hit whatever motion's on the screen and vote on that motion. If it does not pass for any reason, there can be other motions to your point that was made earlier. So this would be the, there is only one motion, am I correct?
Yep.
Okay.
This is, we're talking about a major amendment to the existing PUD that's before us.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the planned unit development, major amendment 00PUD 05A05 for Ramcat Village PUD, as submitted by Spalding and Norris, PA, project 785-14, dated 1/12/2015, with the following conditions as stated on the next-
Eight slides. Shall we go through those real quickly? I don't think we have to read them, why don't just leave them on the screen for a second? Do you want to comment on any of them, Laura?
They're all, they're all have been, of course, in your, in your packet that you received and were posted to the website, so everyone has had opportunity.
Just didn't want to leave anything out. Why don't you go through the slides real quick and then we'll call for a second if appropriate. One more, I think, yeah. Okay. Is that it? All right, there's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Sure, I did, nay. The vote is three to two for approval of the motion, and we will take it from there, okay? Thank you for everybody's input, and as I say, we worked hard on this one regardless. Thank you. Next. All right. Agenda item 8B under new business is 13DP08A03, Holly Springs Town Center, Phase 2 amendment. Laura, you're back.
Back.
You're back.
I mean-
Just stop a second, please. Sure, go.
Okay.
About 40 more seconds.
What's that?
Forty more seconds.
Okay.
We'll wait for Tim to get back. While we're waiting, I'll save some time later on, kind of like other business, but it's an interruption. Crosswalks, lot going on, but I got to tell you one thing, I'm watching the crosswalks, one side is getting the idea, the other side sometimes doesn't. And I saw a person almost get hit today again with, person coming this way stopped, the person coming this way did not stop. So cut it out. Not you. And I think we also got a, an email, was that from you, Kendra, about, yeah, about restriping and redoing the crosswalks on Main Street? Am I right?
Yes. DOT resurfaced Main Street and it was brought up at the last meeting that up at Main Street and Holly Springs Road, they had not been replaced, so I checked in with DOT. They're going to put some temporary striping down. We have to wait till the temperature gets a little bit higher for the thermoplastic, which is the fancy word for reflective. And then down here in front of Main Street, or in front of Town Hall, there were three decorative crosswalks, and so DOT is going to go ahead and put temporary striping down for safety reasons, and then when we do our resurfacing, our annual resurfacing project, that'll be something that is done with that project. So the decorative crosswalks are coming back, but those will be with the resurfacing project.
Is that just a hot crust that they do that with, where they do the crosswalk?
It is, and then they put the reflective beads down in the thermoplastic paint, and so the, it has to be dry and it has to be, I think, 40-something and rising, which we have not had lately.
Really?
Where you been?
Chicago.
If we do, it rains, so.
I went to Indiana a few weeks ago for a shower for my first great-grandchild, for those of you who have not had that honor yet, and hopefully none of you here have, as an age point. It was 12 degrees, and I remembered why I moved from Indiana to North Carolina very quickly. All right, we're back again, so Laura, please.
Okay. This is for an amendment to Holly Springs Town Center Phase 2, which is well underway at this point. Trees are down and the earth is moving out there. This is the location, of course, just further as you go down 55GB Alfred towards Apex, this is the site of Phase 2. The amendment tonight is to revise the building elevations for the theater building proposed in Phase 2 for Holly Springs Town Center. Previously, as we all know, it was a combination for theater and bowling alley. That is no longer on the table. They've come back with a solely movie theater design, removing the bowling alley component, and will now be comprised of a dine-in, nine-screen theater concept, and will take the building footprint from 63, 850 square feet, to 47, 813 square feet. So this is the new site plan with that in effect. I do want to mention that the overall kind of integrity of Phase 2 is still intact, still same access point of Grant Hill continuing along in the front, Retail K and Retail L in the front did not change, and the open space in the front did not change. This is the covered portico share that they have added that was not done previously, but they're still showing a nice open space in the front that will be comprised of nice planters and benches, as was previously approved, to really show kind of an active social gathering spot with the, with the new theater. The same, it'll be comprised- The same, it'll be comprised of the same materials as what's previously in Phase One and what's proposed for Phase Two. So we're seeing brick, the same brick colors as what's approved out there in their design criteria, EFAS and CMU, as well as, of course, the same color palette. Due to the size and scale of the buildings, we do have three requests for alternate means of compliance, but of course, that follows when we start seeing this scale, the sheer scale of the buildings, and I'll go into those in detail. I want to talk about the proposed theater, so this is the front. As you can see, this will be the entrance. These are actually, I want to point these out, these are really innovative LED lights that will gradually change color. So that'll be, that'll be kind of the beacon doing that there. We do permit them because, of course, they don't have any kind of message, so they're not considering any kind of signs, so they'll gradually change colors there in the front, which is kind of a neat thing, unique to other theaters that we see in the triangle. This will kind of be the first of that kind. In terms of, they do meet all their glazing requirements in the front. The alternate means of compliance speak to the building materials, do the scale, they are requesting to use, you know, use of EFAS as well, you know, rather than meet the minimum sixty percent of brick, and that's consistent with previous Phase One and Two that used, you know, the tilt-top concrete panels. They're using the EFAS that will be the similar color and design as the previous buildings. The other alternate means of compliance relates to the variation of massing. Building walls will exceed baywits of thirty feet and excess of seventy feet, but of course, to the greatest extent possible, they're showing variations of that. As you can see, it's not one continuous strand. You can see the other areas, they're trying to meet that to the greatest extent. And also, number three regards to roof treatment, roof line shown on extended a continuous plane for more than fifty feet, just for the sheer sign of the rooms with the movie screens and whatnot, and it has to extend more than fifty feet, but of course, they're providing variation whenever possible, so we don't get, you know, just a sheer, a sheer box design. Want to also mention that the previous design, with regards to the larger building, they did have to submit a parking reduction request. With this smaller building, they no longer need that, so they meet the UDO parking requirements, which is great, because we know that this is going to be well-used.
Is it?
Yes. The applicant is here. If you'd like to hear from the architect, the planning board did recommend unanimously approve it, and the applicant was there and explained the dine-in theater concept, and it's unique, and I think worth hearing about.
It's a nice looking building.
Yeah, can you go back to the front? No, go back, one more. That one.
Yep.
Just for my, what is the dotted thing above the, on the right-hand side there? The dotted dash thing going up that there?
Oh, that is the proposed sign feature.
Oh, for the movie theater.
Yeah.
I thought it was something new, too.
Mm-hmm.
How much variation is that from the original theater we saw way back when?
The original theater, it wasn't perpendicular to what you see now.
More square.
It's a lot more kind of a traditional rectangle type shape, and obviously, this moved up as well, which allowed the reduction of the stormwater, as well as some of the retaining walls, was able to be eliminated, pushing this up closer, so really it was a win-win for us in that situation in terms of maintenance.
And the dine-in part will be approximately where, just out of curiosity?
I'll let the applicant come up to explain that.
Shall we hear quickly from the applicant? Is that okay?
Sure.
Please come forward, applicant.
They're all looking at each other.
Which one are you, or the applicant?
You do it, you do it.
Thank you.
There you go.
If you'll also give us your name and address, we appreciate it.
My name is Fred Henderson. I'm from Chattanooga, Tennessee.
Been there.
Okay. I'm with Art Tech Design. This project will have nine theaters, varying sizes from sixty-six people to the largest, I think it's 251 or so. It's not your traditional theater. It'll have no box office. When you come in through the front doors, it'll be opening to a large lobby area with no high ceilings and all. To the left, there's a bar and seating area where they will serve drinks. To the right-hand side as you enter, there's a customer service counter. That's where you'll buy your tickets. That's where they will explain the menu items. They will give you a menu, you will go into the theater of your choice. The theater is set up different than most. There's, our aisles are six and a half feet wide. That includes a chair width, but that does allow the waiter to come to your station, give you a menu, serve, bring you water, let you take your time. When you're served dinner, traditionally, and the ones we have now, they're served on china, crystal, and cloth napkins. And hopefully, they can get everybody there and have the meal served before the movie starts. They try to get the word out, you know, give us thirty minutes before the movie time, and then time that thirty minutes is up, and the previews is up, everyone's finished their meal, and they can start the movie. The movie chairs, they're our large recliners. They have a built-in light above the right shoulder that shines a spotlight on your plate, so you can see what you're eating without, you know, eating in the dark.
Glad we asked you to come up.
Yeah. So it's a pretty neat concept. We have one in Destin, there's one in Chattanooga. We had one that's opened last night in Bloomington, Indiana.
Indiana?
And we have several more under construction throughout and under the planning phase.
So let me ask you, do you have a room that doesn't have the dinner? I mean, does...
Just movie.
Just a movie?
You don't have to eat dinner if you just want to come and see a movie.
Get popcorn and just...
Get popcorn and go.
But you've still got the space to sit.
But you have the space to sit.
Is it stadium seating still?
It's stadium seating. There's thirty-five inches between rows, so you go up five steps between rows to the, so you're looking over everyone's head.
Wow.
How soon can you make this happen?
We're hoping, once this, we get approval, to move right into the permitting stage and move forward from there. It should take ten to twelve months for construction.
Stand.
The outside, looking at the entrance being a gathering area, does, do you know if that, I'm not sure if you're familiar with our North Hills, the movie theater in North Hills, do you know if it's, you know, like Beaver Creek, you walk right from the parking lot to the front of the building. North Hills has a nice big area to walk around, stand around, some benches, and I'm wondering, is that kind of what we're looking at?
North Hills has, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be similar to that, okay.
I would think it'd be similar. We have quite a large area around the front of the entry where we have benches and planters, and there's an outside dining area outside the...
That'd be nice.
...part of it, so. Thing else.
You've done a good job, thank you. I'm hungry.
You have, you have nine theaters?
Yes, sir.
And how is the, how, the ones that you have, how is the restaurant set up as far as being able to serve nine different theaters? Do they have one central kitchen area that...
There's one central kitchen, and each theater has a service area, or a service station, that has drinks and things, and the waiters work out of that station, and then they serve each individual theater.
And this is the way you got the others pretty well set up, too?
Yes, sir.
And they work, obviously? Otherwise, you wouldn't do it.
How long have they been in operation? Have you had one that's...
The one in Chattanooga's been in operation for a couple of years, and one in Destin's for two or three years.
And they're successful with that setup?
Yes, sir.
And so people have to come, you have a theater time seven o'clock after the...
Yes, ma'am.
So people come at seven o'clock, and during the time that they're showing all the previews and all that, that's when they're serving dinner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And ticket price, the movie ticket prices are comparable to...
They're comparable to other theaters, because you don't have to buy your meal, you pay for your meal separate.
Okay.
And the menu varies from popcorn and hot dogs for kids up to some of the nicer places. Some of them have, I don't know, certain cuts of steak, and grilled chicken, and some nicer things.
Nice.
See you there.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. There you go.
Interesting, wow.
There you go.
Bring people from other, others of the area, yeah.
Oh, definitely.
All right, Laura, you're back.
It could be a destination.
Oh, yeah.
Destination location.
That's what we want.
Now, if we could just bowl down those six-foot-wide aisles.
I know.
Find a place for that bowling alley.
Okay, playing order, you go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, discussed planning board, they, whatever, the exact same thing the applicant did, as you all just heard. So they unanimously recommended to approve the architectural waivers, as well as the overall amendment request.
We have only, is it only seven motions, Sean? I'm going to blame you for the seven motions, you know that. That's okay. All right, let's go through number one through seven. Who wants to start?
Motion, okay, motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for the wa, for a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 3.08A1C1A, architectural and site design requirements to allow for alternate means of compliance for the building materials from the minimum requirement of sixty percent masonry to twenty-one percent masonry in association with development petition 13DP08A03 Holly Springs Town Center Phase Two Amendment dated 1/9/15 as submitted by Art Tech Architecture.
Second.
Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number two.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, a motion to grant a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 3.08A1C1A, architectural and site design requirements to allow for an alternative means of compliance for the building materials from the minimum requirement of sixty percent masonry to twenty-one percent masonry in association with development petition 13DP08A03 Holly Springs Town Center Phase Two Amendment dated 1/9/15 as submitted by Art Tech Architecture. Second.
Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number three.
I'll make the motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 3.08A1C2BI, architectural and site design requirements to allow for alternate means of compliance for the building massing requirement from a maximum allowed building bay length of thirty feet to seventy feet in association with development petition 13DP08A03 Holly Springs Town Center Phase Two Amendment dated 1/9/15 as submitted by Art Tech Architecture.
Second.
Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number four.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, a motion to grant a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 3.08A1C2BI, architectural and site design requirements to allow for alternate means of compliance for the building massing requirement from a maximum allowed building bay length of thirty feet to seventy feet in association with development petition number 13DP08A03 Holly Springs Town Center Phase Two Amendment dated 1/9/15 as submitted by Art Tech Architecture.
Second.
Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number five.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 3.08A1C1GI, architectural and site design requirements to allow for alternate means of compliance for the roof treatment requirement for a roof line plan extending in a continuous plane for more than fifty feet to seventy feet in association with development petition 13DP08A03 Holly Springs Town Center Phase Two Amendment dated 1/9/15 as submitted by Art Tech Architecture.
Second.
Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number six.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, a motion to grant a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 3.08A1C1GI, architectural and site design requirements to allow for alternate means of compliance for the roof treatment requirement for a roof line plan extending in a continuous plane for more than fifty feet to seventy feet in association with development petition number 13DP08A03 Holly Springs Town Center Phase Two Amendment dated 1/9/15 as submitted by Art Tech Architecture.
Second.
Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number seven and last.
Motion to approve development plan 13DP08A03 for Holly Springs Town Center Phase Two Amendment as submitted by John R. McAdams Company dated 1/9/15 with the following conditions as stated on the screen. Second.
Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Sure.
Thank you, Laura.
8D, new business, 14MAS06, Twelve Oaks, Phase Nine. You are not Laura, you are Sean.
That's right, we'll give her a little break.
You guys are trying to trick me all the time. Go ahead, Sean.
All right, the next item on the agenda is for preliminary plan approval for an eleven-lot subdivision. This is located right in between the Old Mills Lake subdivision over here, the Bass Lake, or excuse me, the Brook Manor subdivision, which is just right off of Bass Lake Road. This is the previously approved Logan's Manor subdivision against across these two parcels here. So this is Logan's Manor Two, which is twenty-three acres on the backside of the Logan's Manor subdivision. This is also part of the Suggs Farm Park property that is not under the conservation easement, so it's on the other side of the creek. As I said before, this is for an eleven-lot subdivision. The proposed density is 1.87 units per acre. The zoning of the property is R-10, which has a maximum density of 3.25, so they're well under our maximum density. Minimum lot size in R-10 is 10,000 square feet. The average lot size that is being proposed is 10,525,000 square feet, and I will note that the lots that are adjacent to the conservation area are much larger, 15,000, 16,000 square feet, so these lots will have a nice wooded backyard that's right up against that conservation easement. This is the proposed landscaping plan. The perimeter yards will be an A20 open tight buffer against the Logan's Manor subdivision, Brook Manor, and Old Mills Wind, and then the buffer along the south side, this will be an undisturbed 20-foot buffer, so this exceeds our requirement and that coincides with that conservation easement area. Street trees are being provided along the only street through the project, and guards will be installed per our street tree policy to protect the sidewalk and the curb. Planning board heard this last month, they recommended approval unanimously, they appreciated the larger lots against Suggs Farm Park, and they also felt that the subdivision crest, request was appropriate for this site.
Did they have any issues that they discussed?
There were no issues with the subdivision, correct.
Okay. Was this the same meeting the previous planning board was 8-0-0? This one's 7-0-0? Was there somebody...
That is a typo, thank you for catching that. It's 8-0-0.
I was going to say that, but I didn't have a chance.
We did not lose a member halfway through the meeting.
I was looking, the planning board vote was eight-point...
It's a typo here, but it's 8-0 here.
All right, other questions? Sean?
Oh, that's pretty straightforward.
Straightforward, all right. Motion, there's one.
Just one.
Just one.
Motion to approve preliminary plan 14MAS05 for Logan's Manor Two as submitted by Withers and Ravenel, project number 2140355.20 dated 1/12/15 with the following conditions, numbered one through seven on the next two slides as stated on the screen.
In the slides.
Second.
Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Hi, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Item number nine, other business. I do have just one more thing to say, I've talked about the crosswalk. Oops, I missed something?
We got Mr. Twelve Oaks here. Come on.
You didn't get rid of me that easily, come on.
Excuse me.
You're depriving Laura of another chance.
All right, Laura, go for it.
Last, but certainly not least...
Sorry.
Subdivision plan for Twelve Oaks, Phase Nine, freshly in the town limits, and of course, you all remember, this tract was brought into the PUD through a major amendment and a rezoning that was approved by town council last month. I always like to go through the numbers of the PUD of Twelve Oaks and where we are today. Consists of a total of 823.14 acres, allows up to 2,353 total dwelling units. To date, 1,172 lots have been approved for the entire development. Proposed Phase Nine that you see before you tonight is comprised of 407 single-family lots and no multifamily lots, so these will be all single-family... lots and no multifamily lots, so these will be all single-family detached product. The proposed density is 3.04 dwelling units per acre. The lots will be comprised of Type A and Type B lots. Type A lots have a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet and Type B lots have a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. And I can tell you those Type B lots are primarily in this, in this area. Type A lots are primarily over here. This shows, the previously approved PUD plan showed Recreation Center Lot in this area. This phase, of course, will be required to do mail kiosk, and they're showing that in this location. We do require a mail kiosk to have more than 19 boxes to have off-street parking areas. So they are showing that in this area, and of course, ultimately will be served by the Recreation Center lots. And we're seeing that a lot with, with subdivisions that have had to retroactively fit, fit these where they have recreation centers as well as future planning, they've, they've shown that here. The minimum, of course, I talked about the lot size of 4,000 square feet for Type A lots, with a lot width of 40 and a lot depth of 100. In terms of landscaping, they're meeting our freshly updated street tree requirements for providing a tree every 40 feet. They're also providing a mix because of now we require a minimum of two species per each street to minimize, of course, disease and plight. And of course, as Sean mentioned previously, we do require root guards now to be installed with each street tree, so that'll, that'll be done here and is checked in the field by us as, when each one is installed to make sure that that occurs. Terms of the thoroughfare landscaping along New Hill and Woods Creek Road, they're showing a 30-foot semi-opaque buffer, as you can see the detail here. Which will feature one canopy tree, two small shrubs, three evergreen shrubs, and five shrubs per 1,000 square feet, and that is something that was set forth in the PUD standard is, so that's, the buffer detail that you see here is what's existing now along New Hill Road with the current phases one and two, and so that'll be carried out here. Do also want to point out the pedestrian greenway connection, which will be here to the south, connecting through the golf course into the earlier phases of 12 Oaks as well. Terms of the planning board, they did unanimously recommend approval. The board stressed that they would like to see developed pocket parks throughout this phase, as has been done in other phases of 12 Oaks. The applicant did state that that was the intent to do so, and so they, the board felt like a condition was not needed because they felt that with 12 Oaks' previously track record of, of doing the, that throughout the phases and the applicant stating that that was, again, their intent, they felt like it wasn't necessary to add the condition.
Any other discussion points that they had, other than the little pocket parks?
Other than the pocket parks, no, that they, they felt like this was, this fit the intent of and carried out the 12 Oaks community.
Laura, can you go back to the, the street layout there?
Yes.
And I'm really, I'm kind of concerned about the, the mail kiosk.
Mm-hmm.
You've just got the one for the whole.
No, there's one on the other side of the street too, I'm sorry. I didn't point that out. There is one as well, I apologize, there's one in this area as well.
You got one on each side of the main thoroughfare.
Each side of the street.
I just, just a thought is having it that far set back in, I, I would think it would seem more logical to have it closer to the main entrance so that people aren't backtracking back out, but I'm, that's my own thoughts, but, but there is one for each side of the, that's good to hear.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, is there a reason why we're not having two on each side? That's a lot of homes for those ones.
Would the applicant like to come up and discuss their mail kiosk planning?
It's, yeah, because you've got all of that traffic, has to come down to that point from all over that, on each side, go to a central point back in the subdivision, that's...
You know the drill, Tom.
For the minutes, my name is Tom Spalding with Spalding and Norris, 972 Trinity Road, and representing the applicant. What you don't see here is a detailed plan for an amenity center here where my cursor is. So until we get that detailed plan, the, the kiosk area will be designed in with an amenity center there, so it won't be kind of just a standalone here. In working with the postmaster out of Fuquay, they prefer just one location, they don't like to see a bunch of multiple locations everywhere, it's easier for them. So this was their preference to have one on each side and...
Is there a formula on how many?
I was going to ask the same question, yeah. I don't think, I don't think there is, is there? Does anybody know the answer to that?
Formula saying, how many homes before you have a different kiosk?
Nope. We, we had met with the postmaster in the past. He had indicated that around 200, he starts to look for an additional kiosk if you have a road that kind of cuts your subdivision in half, then you would get two, of course, as you see with this plan. But I think around 200, 150 to 250 is when you start to see that second one come into play.
I mean, it's such a, it creates such a logistical thing when you have all of those people that are in those other areas out towards the main road have to come all the way back to that amenity center and then go backtrack all the way there every day to get their mail. It really...
We're hoping that some of them walk and bike, because there'll be, there'll be bike racks and that kinds of things set up with it, and, but...
Are there any mail, or, I mean, on the, okay, but I'm trying to think, so, nobody's been built, but the old, current 12 Oaks has mailboxes. They were grandfathered there.
Now, there will be some kiosk areas being implemented into the 12 Oaks plan.
In the newer phases?
And it's harder to do after the fact than it is now.
Sure.
Up front, but there will be some, the great thing about the, the main part of 12 Oaks is they have several amenity centers and different areas like the community gardens area and different spot locations that you can use jointly.
Am I correct to, I think I remember this, that, that all mailboxes at some point in time will be eliminated? That's the plan?
That is the plan, as far as I know.
I just can't wait. That means I'm, I know, Saturday delivery. Oh, well.
Anyway, it's, it just, that just pointed out, I mean, that was a concern to me that you would have the daily concentration of all of the people back to that one corner and then have to disperse back to their home.
Right.
On a daily trips, it just, I don't know if there's any answer to what would make it easier, but thought locating it closer to the main entrance would make, make it easier. As people came into the subdivision, they could pick up their mail and then go on to their home. Anyway, just a thought.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Laura, you're back. Any final comments, Laura?
No final comments from me.
Questions? Questions, Laura? Did that?
Yep.
All right, if not, let's go to the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve preliminary plan 14-MAS 06 for 12 Oaks Phase Nine as submitted by Spalding and Norris Engineering, project number 410-02 dated 1/12/2015 with the listed conditions.
Second.
As stated. Motion been made in second, in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, other business. The only thing I was going to say is that keep your eyes and ears open for a major event at the Cultural Arts Center planned at this point for February, as I recall, then 27th, did I tell you, 27th of February? I think it was. Don't remember, I don't either. Anti-bullying is gaining ground as we speak, and we might even have the lieutenant governor come down this time, since the governor didn't have time to do it last time. And I just want to say one thing, it's, it's really kind of a downer. For those of you who think this is not that important, I just got another email today from a parent who had some bad news about a kid. It happens all the time, and that's enough of that, okay? Other, other business.
Yeah, I'd like to remind people of the Arts Festival coming up.
Yes.
February 4th through 7th, and you still have a chance to get, some, some sections are already sold out, but I think you still have a chance to get tickets to the gala, it's only $15 a person, so.
And that's Saturday night, right?
Saturday night, we got a great blues, Memphis Blues fella coming in and talk, talking to us and playing some good music, and I think Friday night is date night where they have a band coming in, so it's $5.
Don't look at me, Tim.
So make sure you get over to the Cultural Center this weekend and enjoy those festivities.
I would just like to give kudos to the, the town staff, the town manager and Daniel Weeks and the people that made the presentation to the Wake County Board of Commissioners for the North Main Athletic Facility and their, their efforts to get the $1 million approved, which was approved yesterday, and that's, they did a great job in the presentation, made it clear to all of those commissioners to the value of that facility to the county and the money and revenue that it'll bring into the county, so I really appreciate all of the work that you guys did.
And what's the estimated date of completion? Mid-May?
May, yeah, or mid-May, that's right.
I'm looking forward to those ball games.
First game is, is May 28th?
28th. Ooh, it's an away game.
Yeah. Playing the New York Yankees, I think. Anyway, other comments?
Yes, I wanted to talk about really quick, Holly Grove Middle School is inviting everyone to join our 5th Annual St. Baldur's Event. It's to, to raise money for childhood cancer. It's whether you decide to shave your head, cut your hair, four-inch minimum, volunteer or donate, we hope you'll be a part of the excitement as you try to reach our goal of 25,000. The St. Baldur's Foundation is a volunteer-driven charity that funds more in childhood cancer research grants than any organization except the US government. In the past four years, we've been able to raise over $36,000 honoring current and former students who have battled or about, currently battling cancer. Please get involved and you'll be giving hope to infants, children, teens, and young adults fighting childhood cancers. We're looking for monetary donations as well as donations that can be used as door prizes at our event. Each door, donor and business will be recognized at the event, in the press, and through our website as we take time to thank you for your support. As you know, we do have children in Holly Springs who are battling cancer right now in a few of our schools. So this is a really great event, we're trying to reach, in Holly Grove Middle School itself, trying to get up to 100 children to either, or in staff to cut their hair, shave their heads. So as I read, we've done a great job in the past and we want to continue to do it again. So if you can go to this website, it's kind of, contact me, I'd be happy to put you in touch with that website, it's a very strange...
I hate Sherri, the juror, you're going to shave your head, right?
Um, well, yeah, I was thinking about it, I did, I have talked to my girls, my daughters are going to cut their hair now that they lowered it to four inches, but hopefully we'll get, be able to get six inches that can, that hair, six inches of hair can be donated to lots of love. So, but we, we'd like, anybody who can help us out with donations or door prizes, we'd greatly appreciate it, and you can get in touch with me.
All right, true story. Last year during this event, the principal, whose name is Ken Prue, will kill me for doing this, but I, if you don't know Ken, he's got a beautiful head of hair. And when he had his head shaved right down to the bone, I asked his wife, who I've known for a long time, I said, "What do you think of that?" And she goes, "I hated it." And I said, "What do you mean?" She says, "I married him for his hair." But we survived. All right. True story. Yes, Jimmy, anything?
No, just, again, reiterate what Tim said, y'all did a really good job on your presentation and, and getting the extra money from the sales and sales tax and for food and beverage. Really good job, y'all, art to be commended.
Well, I really appreciate that.
Manager's report, zipping right in.
With that said, yeah.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, Hank, Hank got something?
Yeah, I, I want to say the same thing, commend the staff and everyone associated with the North Main Athletic successful grant. I can all, I pretty much assure the county commissioners who voted unanimously in favor of this that they will not be disappointed with the, the revenue that the county is going to get from this.
Here, here.
I, I do actually have one question, it was, it was brought up earlier with the Ramcat. Within the construction procedures, is there a, a requirement that construction traffic has to be, certain roads have to be taken, like certain construction entries onto the site?
We've stipulated that in the past, yeah, we have stipulated that in the past.
Okay, all right. So, so it would apply to them that they have to use, let's say, the Holly Springs Road entrance as opposed to like Steep Ridge or some of the others, or?
I think once they come in with their actual phased-in plans, I think then we'll, then we'll, we'll get down to that level of detail.
Okay, so it would require...
We have done that in the past.
It's council action.
Correct. Well, actually, I think staff would more or less direct that, you know, as, as part of a condition of, you know, staff approval. We've done that in the past, we try to keep the construction traffic away from the existing residences to minimize disruption and for safety reasons.
All right, great, thank you. Anything else?
Manager's report.
Let's go to the manager's report.
Yes. I really do appreciate the, the kind words, and I'd also like to expand that a little bit because the mayor in this, on this particular issue, I think, went above and beyond with his efforts, and, and there may be some other members on the council, and I don't mean to overlook anyone, but I know there was a lot of communication behind the scenes with the Wake County Board of Commissioners. So in an effort to better explain the project and to keep it sort of in the, in the forefront, and I think, I think that speaks a lot to his dedication and commitment to the project as well, so I'd like to thank him. And also the town man, or the county manager, Jim Hartman, I think his leadership was also instrumental in getting that issue, actually, he won, he had that issue brought up with, back in 2014 before the, the other county commissioners took office, but I found him to be very supportive from the beginning. And then finally, of course, the Wake County Board of Commissioners for being open-minded to this, and I agree with Commissioner Cobb or Town Councilman Cobb, this is going to be a great investment. The return on investment, which was a big issue with, with the county commissioners, is very strong with this particular project, and unlike some of the other projects which are conceptual at this point and may or may not actually happen, one thing is, one thing is undeniable, we will be the first to generate travel tourism revenue back to Wake County.
And the first time we got it, too.
They took logic to heart.
Yes.
Yes. So thanks to everyone involved for making that happen, and we'll be moving forward or coming to you in the future with some ideas and some thoughts on how we can utilize that money to benefit the project. Also, next Wednesday, we have a workshop, it's on branding, okay? It's in the Holloman Room downstairs at 5:30, I believe, is that correct? 5:30 next Wednesday on the 11th.
I didn't know that, did I?
And the only other thing that I have, the last, at our marathon meeting, the last meeting, Abby Priest, I'm sure you remember, she came up and gave a great presentation
Oh, we sure do.
On, on the street light, need for streetlights, and also brought up the issue of a possible dog park. We, we researched her request related to the streetlights, and she did a great job identifying exactly where and then the distance and so forth, and we have found that we do need two streetlights there, so we are planning to install, install those, so. Wanted to give you an update on that.
Abby, I hope you're watching.
Yeah, she made it easy for us.
She did.
Yes. Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add to Chuck's comments is that the nomination for a million-dollar investment to us was made by Betty Lu Ward, and she said a wonderful, a lot of good words about Holly Springs, which was even perhaps more important. It was seconded by Sig Hutchison, and Sig also said quite a few very good words about Holly Springs, and that was the whole point. The vote, as Chuck said, was unanimous, and I think you'll hear more because we've got the attention of a newspaper and now we've got the attention of a TV channel station soon, so I think it helps to put Holly Springs even bigger on the map, and we were very appreciative of their total support of us. It was breath of fresh air.
It was nice.
Nice way to say it.
Holly Springs is a jewel of Wake County.
It was nice to get our, the text about it came out pretty quick, too, so.
Yeah. Magical place.
Now, it's solar.
Nothing they can't wait.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Thanks, all.
I hope y'all did.